Well, I guess I'll go ahead and get started because we have a lot to cover. So I think I want to announce that welcome. My name is Karen Pontius with the La Plata Dems. This is the first of many city council forums that are coming up. I hope you can get to them. I'll put information in the chat at the end of our session. So it'll be, you can copy and paste the different times and places. We're recording this, so it'll be available on our YouTube channel in a couple of days. Thanks for attending the La Plata Democrats Zoom meeting. The goal of the club is to bring together all Democrats from the most conservative to the most progressive, to celebrate our shared values, appreciate who we are, and work together to put more Democrats in office. I'd like to acknowledge our club luncheon sponsor, which is Albrecht and Albrecht Law Firm. They've been supporting this event for several years. So if you need legal help, please think about Albrecht and Albrecht. And I'll put their website in the chat. Today, we'll hear from five candidates for the Durango City Council. The ballots will go out March 17th, and the deadline to return them is April 1st. And for myself, I will not be relying on the mail. I'm gonna drop them off, so I hope everybody drops them off by April 1st. The five candidates, we each have two minutes for their opening statements, and then we'll move to prepared questions. Each candidate will have 90 seconds. Oh, I changed it. It's two minutes to answer each question because these are pretty serious questions. So you'll have two minutes to answer each question. And if your question hasn't been asked, participants, please put your question in the chat, and we'll get to it at the end if there's time. We have 90 minutes. So we have incumbent Olivier Bosmans, incumbent Jessica Buell, and we have candidate Chris Elias with us, Shirley Gonzalez, and Kip Coso. And I'm gonna type their names in the chat so you all know who the players are. So everyone's asked to stay muted except for the speaker, myself. And well, my husband's here. Kirby McLauren's here. He's helping with timing. If you want to submit a question different from the ones, okay, I already said that. If you're having trouble with internet connectivity, which happens a lot, you may want to disable your video because audio only works better on slower connections. The Zoom meetings being recorded will be available within a day or so on our YouTube channel, so you can share it with people, and I hope you do that. Go into the YouTube search bar and just put in La Plata Democrats, and it should show up. If you want a larger video of the person that's speaking today, you can go to Speaker Mode, which is in the upper right corner of your little box, and you can click on that, on the three dots, and you'll find Speaker Mode. I'd like to encourage everyone to donate to La Plata County Dems in these important times. We can accumulate funds ahead of need. So monthly donations are appreciated, and you can set those up on Act Blue. This is our first club meeting for 2025. Check on the Dems' website to see what our next meeting will be. We're hoping to have someone speaking on the USAID issue and the impact in April, and then in May, hopefully, LPEA, which is a really big thing in this town. We really need to get people to pay attention to what's going on with LPEA. If anyone has any other announcements to make, you can enter it in the chat, and we'll recognize you at the end of the session. So now I'm going to introduce everyone, and then we'll give them time to give their opening statements. Olivier Bosmans was elected to the council in 2021. He's at the end of his first term. Olivier has a Master of Business Administration degree and an engineering degree in Europe and owns the international environmental consulting company Globos. That's G-L-O-B-O-S LLC. He has three children. He told the Durango Herald, "His interest in a second term is to represent the people and businesses of Durango, and he stands for transparency and community engagement." And I'm gonna put his website in the chat in a minute. Jessica Buell was elected. Am I saying that right, Buell, or is it Buell?
Just Buell.
Buell, okay, thank you.
Made me sound more fancy than I am.
Jessica was elected to the council same, April 2021, at the end of her first term. She owns two businesses, Marketing Concepts Squared and Lucky Services, and she's a mother of two teenage boys. She told the Durango Herald, "She supports small businesses and limiting red tape, knowing the challenges businesses face as a business owner herself. The city's made great strides in economic development and the city's housing division, but she feels there's still a lot of work to be done." So true. Charles, who goes by Chris, Chris Elias, moved to Durango from Tulsa, Oklahoma in 2006 to attend Fort Lewis College. He's been a butcher at Sunnyside Farms Market before moving to California, where he started a cannabis business. Those were the good days when everything was starting to be legal. THC Design was the name of it. And then he went to Oklahoma to start another cannabis business, Heartland Farms. Chris told the Durango Herald, "He wants to represent the people who are the lifeblood of Durango." Shirley Gonzalez moved to Durango two years ago from San Antonio, Texas, where she served as city council from 2013 to 2021. In San Antonio, she also operated a small family business that had been kept in her family for 62 years. And I just met her mother, and she's who had the business. She's wonderful. Shirley told the Durango Herald, "She loves municipal government, understands the system, and is especially passionate about transportation alternatives and small business development." She owns Pedal the Peaks in Durango, and that's down there by Cold Stone Creamery. Anyway, it's on College, or no, it's on Fifth Street, right? It's on College? Is it really? Okay, she's married and has three children. Kip Coso grew up in Durango, moving back most recently in 2016. He retired from a consulting job in September for a large hospital on the East Coast after working in the health and wellness field for more than 30 years. He spent nine years working with the Southern Ute Indian Tribe and opened the Sun Ute Community Center in Ignacio. Coso told the Durango Herald, "He enjoys volunteering and driving community connections." So we're gonna give them each two minutes, and the first one to go, we're going in alphabetical order, will be Olivier Bosmans.
Thank you, Karen, for organizing this forum. Before I start on my intro and background, I have a kind request for you. You mentioned that you will ask all the questions in the same order to the counselors. And since nobody, I assume, knows of the questions, my request would be to rotate the order every time a question is asked because I feel since I'm the first on the list, I'm always going to be the one that has to answer a question right off the bat without even a second to think through the answer I'm going to give. So is there a chance to make that a little bit more equitable?
I'm gonna have my assistant work on that. So you're first right now. Go ahead and give me your opening statement. Thanks.
Okay, well, I moved to Durango in 2005. I have three children. My oldest, she was born at the old hospital, which is now the beautiful library, and she's going to college. My other two children were born at the current hospital in Three Springs, and they still attend our public schools. We love Durango. We love the community. This will always be our home. I'm very committed to Durango now and for the long term. I would like to see Durango thrive while we maintain what makes it so special. The, my background, my educational background, as you mentioned, I have an engineering degree and an MBA degree in Europe. I worked as a project manager and an environmental consultant for over 25 years, and I'm a small business owner. I had a small business for a very long time now. I currently serve on the city council, and before that, served on the La Plata County Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustments. And I'm very well-traveled, multilingual, including Spanish. We live in a beautiful area, all the nature. We have a great community with many engaged people, volunteers, organizations. The city has good employees, provide some of the best amenities, such as the library and what we've just done to Chapman Hill, I'm very proud of. And I'm running because I want to, because I bring, and I want to see more honesty, transparency, community engagement with actual follow-through, not just the words, and actually representing the people and businesses in our community. I'm running because I believe a good council has a balance of different people, skills, and experiences. And I certainly believe we need technical and financial expertise on council with the hundreds of millions we will be spending on projects that contain a lot of technical aspects, something I bring to the table. And I certainly don't like all the friction the city has with all the external parties.
Olivier, we've got two minutes each, so I'm gonna cut you off there, and you'll have plenty of time to add more stuff to your answers. Jessica, you're next, opening statement.
Great. I'm not gonna dive into everything that Karen already mentioned. I moved here in 2001, and it's been my home ever since. I've been a waitress. I've been a teacher. I was a teacher at Escalante Middle School. I graduated from Fort Lewis College. I love the spirit and character of Durango. I want my kids to be able to afford to live here if they decide to after college or whatever their future holds. And when I ran for city council, that felt pretty much impossible. It was one of the big things that I have really spearheaded and pushed. Before I was on council, the strategic plan contained nothing about affordable housing. And we made that through my direction and help on council. We've made that a pillar in our strategic plan. I was part of voting in favor of one of our, when I got on council, one of the first projects that came forward was the Animus View Drive Mobile Home Park, where we helped residents and helped fund for them to actually buy the mobile home park. And I was one of the counselors that voted in favor of that. I've voted in favor of every affordable housing initiative since I've been on council. I've helped stand up our housing division through funds and passing budgets. I am super passionate about it. I think we've done a lot of great work, but I think that there's more work to be done. And so I really want to focus on that on my next four years of council. As a new counselor, it was really hard to like, you know, you're drinking through a fire hose and understanding everything. And now I feel like four years in that I like, I got it. I understand, and I know how to get things done. I know how to get other counselors on board with initiatives that I want to see passed. I know how to create, you know, a good working relationship and find common ground with people, and I want to continue doing that in my next four years, and I think we can accomplish even greater things. Bam, done.
All right, Chris, Chris Elias.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Chris Elias. I'm running on behalf of the working class in the service industry in Durango. I've worked paycheck to paycheck in this town. And, you know, I unfortunately had to move away from this town in 2014 to go make a living, which I did not want to, you know. I wanted to stay here. All my friends are here. This is what I consider home. So, you know, so I could eventually make money so I could come back to afford to live here, you know? I want to continue to push affordable housing in this town. I feel like we should push a little bit harder. I want to look into, people have been trying to push for the 15% pay raise in town. I want to look deeper into that. We also have to need, we need to see how it would affect local businesses. We don't want to push people to the brink of closing. We need local, we need local workers to run the lifts. We need local workers to, to work in the kitchens. We need raft guides in this town, and we need to make this very, very appeasing to people to work here and live here because that's what makes Durango run, you know? And, you know, at the same time, we need to keep Durango's character beautiful and fun, you know? And what I'm trying to bring to the council is common sense, sensibility, honesty, and accountability. Anyways, thank you.
And Shirley Gonzalez.
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Shirley Gonzalez, and I'm a candidate for the city council of Durango. I love this amazing city, all the support that we get from our neighbors. I have three children at Park Elementary, and as many of us know, as parents of young children, it takes a village. And being able to communicate with my neighbors, the camaraderie, the community support that exists here, I think, doesn't exist any other place. And so I'm so grateful for everyone, including all the people that are here on this call that are interested in our local government. So we know that at our local level is really where we can have the greatest impact in the community, where we can make changes, where we can invest in our community, that we really have the opportunity to listen and to take action. So I believe that Durango is an amazing place as it exists. The things that I think we could improve on and where I hope to show the biggest impact is on housing along the continuum. So affordable housing seems to have tremendous support at the 80% and above, but we really need to address the issue of our unhoused population. And I'm looking forward to working with our community and the members of the council and the city staff to really address that, to focus our efforts on the most vulnerable populations. I also believe in alternative transportation. Not only am I vision impaired, but I have small children, and so we need to have safe routes to schools and have greater safety along our roadways. And I think as we continue to support small business development and the entrepreneurial spirit of this community, I hope we can continue to invest in our youth and our young people so that they don't have to leave because we all want our community, people to stay and thrive in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Kip Coso.
Good afternoon. Thanks for letting me speak with you today. Kip Coso, as the intro let you know, I grew up in Durango, moved away for college and grad school, and eventually made my way back here with the family in tow, and have loved the community growing up as well as, as an adult. And so a lot of my reason for trying to be elected onto city council is a payback for the childhood that I had and the community that I saw in those years. So I think the key things that we always need to remember is that overall, the city is doing a good job. We have clean water coming out of our taps. We feel safe walking around town. By default, if I have a medical emergency or a fire, there are people who are gonna respond. And so the maintenance and keeping up with many of the good things that are going on is almost as important as addressing some of the situations that we've got that do need us to get in elbows deep and improve the situation. I've got three key things that I'm focused on to begin with the conversation with. A new police building. I believe in 2A and what it's going to achieve. But the core piece of what ballot proposition 2A is going to do is really get a police building that's decades overdue. And I'll be focused on that for the four years that I'm on council. Second issue is related to childcare. I think this extends from my background, working on after-school care with kids, both with the Boys and Girls Club of the Southern Ute Indian Tribe and Boys and Girls Club here, La Plata County, up at the fairgrounds. We've got to do better with infant slots, especially, but childcare slots. As an element of affordable housing, transportation, childcare has to be playing a critical role in affordable lifestyles around town. And then finally, Durango Mesa Park. I've got a long background in health and wellness, as well as recreation, building facilities, creating amenities. Durango Mesa Park's a very exciting opportunity, an incredible gift from the Catses. I want to lean in and help with Durango Mesa Park as well.
Excellent. Thanks for bringing up 2A. I don't have them on my list, but I think I'm gonna put the questions in the chat. Now, this first one is a doozy, okay? So let's just read it over, and I'm gonna read a little slowly and say that you've heard about the current conflict between city and county. La Plata Sheriff's Office over the jail. The city spent taxpayer money on a lawsuit against the county instead of negotiating a solution, and it was eventually dismissed. Effective public safety replies relies on cooperation between the city and county. For example, the city of Durango has threatened to raise the cost of 911 communications for the county despite the county being a co-owner of the facility. It's just one example. Do you support this move? And if so, how do you justify increasing costs for county residents?
Karen, you're muted.
What?
Sorry, we heard you up until, sorry, we heard you up until increasing costs for county residents with the emergency fund for services. Sorry.
Interesting how that happened. Anyway, I must have touched something. Anyway, the, do you support the move to raise the cost of 911 communications for the county despite the county being a co-owner of the facility? How do you justify increasing costs for county residents? If elected, how will you prioritize collaboration with the county? I think that's the heart of this question. To ensure taxpayer dollars are used efficiently and effectively for shared services rather than unnecessary legal battles. So let's go with Jessica first, and then I'll wrap it right around Jessica, and then Chris, Shirley, and Kip, and Olivier.
All right. This is such a complex issue, and what's happened has been all over the newspaper. And so I'm just gonna talk about it from my perspective because I am a relationship builder. I have great relationships with county, city, Southern Ute Indian Tribe. Like, as a human and a person, I am a huge relationship builder, and I want to maintain and grow those relationships. I, Councilor Woodruff and I were huge advocates to get in front of the county and have meetings with the county to resolve this problem right when it came out. I sat in personally four meetings with the county, trying to make progress to like, come to a resolution together, and I thought we had that. And I did it like, over the holidays. Like, the day after Christmas, I was in a meeting with county and city employees trying to like, build and find that relationship. I thought we had the answer, and then the rug kind of got yanked out under us a few days later. We were in a position where, you know, we had no resources for this specialty court that we're doing at the municipal level, which has been super successful. Basically, our new appointed judge, it's been there for a year, now has a specialty court on Fridays that he gets people that are struggling, either whether it's mental health, housing, addiction issues, and he's gonna, he links them up with the right services to try to prevent them from getting stuck into the system. It has been so successful, and we've had such great turnout because of it. And I wanted to continue that. We were okay with having like, 30 days without it, but since, but that didn't work out because the county didn't meet us with their deadlines. And so that's when we went to just get clarification of that ruling and the statutes. And we now have a partner that we're gonna work with, with jail services, that's actually saving taxpayer money. It's gonna be 33% less than the county was charging us for jail services. That was such a small portion, but there it is.
All righty, Chris Elias, have you heard about all this? Have you been reading about it? You've got to unmute. And
There we are.
Speak in general terms if you don't know all the details. That's fine.
Yes, I've heard bits and pieces of it, you know? And I feel as a citizen, like the citizens are the real, real kind of losers in this because we're spending the taxpayer dollars for, for maybe an unnecessary argument. And, you know, obviously, the counties, county citizens and the city's citizens, yeah, are losing in this. I know that there's been discussions between the city and the sheriff, and I feel like we should be able to get back on the negotiating table, you know? Figure out what are their needs? Are they highballing us to keep each person? Is there a way to work that cost down instead of going to Archuleta County? You know, I don't know the complete answer right now. So, you know, I do, yeah, so.
All right, Shirley. Unmute first.
Got it, thank you. So it's, it's not uncommon to have discrepancies between a city and a county or another entity when we're talking about limited funding and limited taxpayers' dollars, especially with something that is so, like, so important, like 911 service. So of course, I've been reading that there's been much discrepancy and some debate amongst who's responsible. But nine, but emergency services have got to be the number one priority. Public safety has got to be the number one priority. And calls for service for the 911 operation really have to be at the priority and like, set egos aside and really determine like, how, what is the best way to serve the people? I don't think that when it comes to emergency services or public safety that we need to be penny-pinching every time. What's most important is that there is a direct response when there's a 911 call. And so that is an issue that cannot be, it has to be prioritized, service over funding in this scenario. So there's many cases where I don't agree with that, where I think we absolutely have to consider the bottom line. But when it comes to emergency services, we've got to do what's the most efficient, most effective way to get people service. So my, in my experience, collaborating is essential because, as you mentioned, there, it's both, right? Both are paying for the service, but what gets people the most efficient response is what should be prioritized.
Yeah, yep. All right, and next would be Kip.
Yeah, I'll very quickly talk about the 911 communications, and then I'll talk about the partnership. The county owns half of that building. I don't believe right now that the entities that are, that are operating through 911 communications there have enough representation for how the 911 is operating. So I'd like to see a board that is made up of the city, the county, and all the other entities that deal with 911 be one of the major tools for how 911 communications is gonna operate. I'm not a fan of the move to Archuleta County, but I will obviously follow up through on anything that the city agrees to at this point. My main reason being, I think it puts distance between families and those people that are incarcerated, and I don't like that. I like leaving the family support systems close to the folks who are dealing with incarceration. So there's an element there. In general, on the relationship, I think relationships have to be a priority, not only for the city and county, but for the city and tribe as well. We have this issue that we're dealing with right now, and we have 10 more, 20 more, or 30 more down the line that we will have to deal with. And so we can't draw lines, and I don't believe we can throw lawsuits out there unless we're absolutely driven to it to, to break up partnerships because we need these partnerships for wildfire issues that we're going to be having soon and all the other things that are happening. So I would encourage board-to-board communications and board-to-board meetings to happen. I think everybody's in a bit of a mode where they're waiting for the city council election to occur right now before they're making any moves. I think we're wasting 45 days doing that, but we, it is what we are dealing with. So board-to-board meetings and communications, I think taking folks out individually for a coffee at times does a lot to grease the machinery of governments, getting along and working together. And I want to make sure we don't forget the tribe in all of this. I think that's my time.
Good. And the last one is Olivier on this question.
Yeah, I thank you for that question. I certainly don't like all the friction that the city has with all these external parties, organizations, businesses, residents, neighborhoods. I think a lot of it should not be the case, and it shouldn't have gotten that far. There, there's a lot more than the community knows of, may be aware of. I have and will vote against pretty much all strong language restraining orders and lawsuits unless absolutely needed, but knowing that typically, every party involved would lose. So I agree with Kip there that we need to sit at the table with these people, and these are our neighbors, these are, we know, they're kids, we know, everybody knows everybody. So this is, this is never a good solution. I also will vote in favor of transparency in disclosing all information that is not confidential or legally restricted. All of those actions would have prevented a lot of the things we see now, not only friction, but also lots of taxpayers' money that has been lost. Now, for all counselors, active county, you can see a track record. You can see mine. Now, for all counselors, active county, you can see a track record, you can see mine. And you can probably realize that I'm probably the only active person on council that has a good relationship with the sheriff and the county. I respect them and I believe they're very professional. So moving forward, I would sit down with the remaining councils and with the La Plata County Commissioners at their offices. And first of all, probably apologize for the friction that we have incurred. We can work with them. I think maybe not the current council, but I certainly believe the, the, the next council will be. The solution for jail services using Archuleta County is not a long-term solution. The nine one one services, strong arming, increasing rates beyond belief, having county people pay for it. These are not solutions. We need to work together. It's very simple.
Good. Thank you, Olivier. Our next question, I will, uh, be starting with, uh, Chris Elias and then Shirley, Kip, Olivier and Jessica. So we're mixing it up. So budget priorities, Durango's budget in general focuses on public safety first and then parks and wrecks and then other projects. Would you reprioritize, and this is, um, coming from outside, so I'm not sure if this is absolutely correct, but you can correct me in your answers. Um, but the, we know that Parks and Recs comes almost first in this town. Would you reprioritize projects to allow for work on infrastructure such as stormwater drainage and water and sewer lines to go ahead of Parks and Recs until we've covered the needed repairs? And what this question makes me think of is the one step or the Durango's next step is that the streets are gonna get torn up anyway, one way or the other. And so what do we do after? Do we take it to the next level or do we put it back just like it was? So our first one would be, uh, Chris Elias.
Yes, uh, so anyways, as a person that avidly uses our, uh, our public parks and rec, I use Horse Gulch multiple times a week during the spring, summer and fall. I use the river, so I use Oxbow Park quite often to put on, to put my raft on. Should we repriorita, reprioritize our projects? Um, I believe so. I went to a financial advisory board meeting where they started talking about our water system and how Durango's water system needs to be updated. A gentleman who was a little bit elderly said a lot of our, our water system was, was put in even before he, uh, he was born. So I would like to, uh, look at that more in depth. Um, as far as first steps, I'm still drawing my conclusion to, to how I feel about that. I've talked to local businesses on how, how they feel about taking away parking, parking spots. And how it kind of narrows the road, takes away that little buffer zone for, for parking and opening up doors and the central, I guess, uh, the little median, you know, there's a lot of deliveries that happen, uh, in the mornings and then the afternoon for local businesses. But I understand, uh, expanding the sidewalks for, for a lot of tourists, um, you know? I, uh, you know, I just haven't drawn a conclusion to how I feel. I still need to talk to a, a few more people how they feel about it, you know? There's a lot of people in this town and, you know, we just have to, yeah, draw conclusions by what people want.
Alrighty, thank you. And Shirley, you're next.
Uh, okay. Well, thank you. Um, so we know that our budget is a statement of our moral values. Um, and the way that currently our budget is, uh, I think is a fair assessment of our values. I know in talking to the community members, um, the issue that rises to the top of the list is housing. Um, and we know that most of that gets funded through, through grants, through other, other mechanisms. Um, and, but that some of it does come from our general fund. So the current way that we do our budgeting, it's a zero-based budgeting, every year we have to reevaluate. Um, I'm not sure I agree with that. I think there's potentially some efficiencies that could happen if we, um, really just, did not use that system, but went on a two-year budget or maybe one-year budget cycle. And that way we could make adjustments as necessary. So I, I, I feel like, um, I, I haven't heard many people complain about safety issues. Property crimes are a problem everywhere. Um, but the way that the budget lies out, I feel very supportive, um, primarily uh, open spaces and parks. I think that's why people love Durango. I sure, I know it's how I do. I would like to see a greater investment in our basic infrastructure because when we do that, we know that it makes streets safer for all road users. When we update our streets and our sidewalks and our lighting and, um, all those sort of fundamental things that we do, it really makes things safer for everyone. And so as we continue to fund our, our public works department that does so much of that work, our transportation that does that. And I think there's opportunities to make adjustments here and there. For the most part, I support the budget the way it is. I got to sit in on the budget last year. Um, and I thought it was very, um, consistent with the values of the community, so I continue to support it.
Excellent. Uh, thanks. Next will be, uh, Kip Coso.
Yeah, a, a couple of points to be made. Sale taxes that are determined by a ballot, by a vote of the citizens, it has to be spent that way. So if two A dictates that City Hall and the police department are getting a new building and that money is allocated in that direction, as well as a quarter cent that's going to recreation, then, then we need to be, um, listening to that and make sure that it goes in the, in the, those proper areas. I think it's, uh, important also to say that the reason that we have representation and we're electing leadership is at times we have to make the decision to reprioritize things. Um, I would say a redundant water line going back up to the, uh, water storage tank at Hillcrest is never going to be a sexy sales story for a bu- budget, uh, item in any given year. And so leadership has to at times sit there and say, this is a multi-year project, this is a priority and it's going to elevate up the list of priorities that we have. Um, that's what we're supposed to do in leadership, I believe. So, um, I think in regards to next steps, uh, I'm firmly in the, uh, on the fence with next steps because I don't think the small businesses have been reassured and, um, enough has been done to ensure that the businesses can survive the construction that has to happen on Main Avenue. We have to redo those mains, we have to, um, reorganize the utilities that are under that street. And so, um, I would like to see much more about this, the, um, reassurance and the support of the small businesses. Um, at the same time, I think it's a wasted opportunity if we don't do something to increase the tree canopy downtown, improve, uh, pedestrian and vehi- vehicle safety and, and bicyclist safety as well down there. Um, so a lot of discussion around next steps and the, and the, uh, the uniqueness of that program. Um, more than anything, we need to be paying attention to maintenance and not let things get sixty years out of date, whether that's water lines or school buildings. We need to keep the maintenance up and, and, and keep, um, these things current, uh, rather than wait too long.
Alright, next will be, um, Olivier.
Thank you. Such a good question. I, uh, I'm very into the finances and the budget and I, I'm gonna just make this a good statement here. I, our financial reporting is not bad. We even get awards. It's like a bank statement. It shows all our expenses. It shows the revenues. It's good. Um, Open Golf is also providing a lot of the financial information. It's a good program. It says nothing about our financial performance. We can spend two million dollars on a study that we do not need or on a project that we will never happen. And the financial report showing that expense is good. But our performance, financial performance would be very poor. And I believe that our financial performance needs a lot of work. And I review and analyze our finance, city finances in a lot of detail, going back five years. And I can tell you that when you look at our budgets, the total fund balances is the easiest one to compare. We are off about fifty percent every year, fifty percent. That's between twenty, thirty to fifty million dollars. What it, what we budgeted for, what the actual numbers are at the end of the year. We budget for unrealistic number of capital projects every year, only completing about twenty-five percent of what we budgeted. And even if you account carryover projects that multiple years, we are still extremely low. It is important because, oh man, this is thirty seconds. I can go on for hours on this. I'll give you one little comment on what you mentioned there, Karen. You said Durango next steps, Main Street needs to be reopened for utilities. I have not seen, I have read a lot, a lot of statements, but I have not seen justifiable proof for that comment you made. And I'm an engineer and I would definitely look at that.
Alrighty, Jessica?
Okay, um, so the citizens have voted twice to have sales taxes passed that go towards Parks and Rec and open space. That is our constituents telling us that they support this funding going towards Parks and Rec and open space. When I got elected to council, one of the things I said is, you know, we've spent how many millions of dollars on Parks and Rec and open space and how much money have we ever spent on affordable housing? Before I was elected, the answer was zero because there, because there wasn't a priority for it. You know, there's a priority now and now we have to get creative with how we fund some of these things that are less sexy. Stormwater, transit, um, you know, infrastructure, things like that. We do have enterprise funds that help with some of the infrastructure. We have the twenty nineteen sales tax that did pass for streets and roads. Um, but it is going to be our staff and our council getting creative to try to find some of these things that aren't quite sexy, get funded. We have a focus group right now that's going forward and looking at how to get stormwater management funded. We do need to fix that. We are out of compliance in a lot of different ways and areas. Um, and I think it's gonna be this council that's about to get elected. We're gonna have to figure out how to get transit to stand on its feet. We are not funded to support our transit for, at the capacity it is for much further out than two more years unless more grants come through, federal funding, that sort of thing. Um, but we can't guarantee and count on that. And to be honest, we need to increase our transportation, not, not potentially not fund it at what it is. And so, yes, we have our priorities out there. We have to look at our constituents. Um, it's a super important that we listen, but it's also important that we take care of what makes Durango so special and great and that we do have those running water, the great streets, the access, the transit that makes it all go forward. And so maybe looking at lodgers tax relocation for transit or, um, you know, various other options.
I don't know how you do that. Wait two minutes. Okay, um, the next question is about affordable housing and we'll go, uh, let's see here, we got Shirley first, then Kip, then Olivier, Jessica and Chris. You'll be last, Chris. Affordable housing, which you've touched on, um, I'm just gonna mention this one little piece of it in that the city has helped support two mobile home parks in the city limits. Um, I think there are four for sale right now, four really small parks. So we'll, we don't know if those people will want to buy their own homes and become co-ops or not. We could look for opportunities on city-owned land to create another park or two. Mobile homes are the easiest path to homeownership for many. Uh, what role do you believe the city should play in fostering sustainable housing here in Durango? And, and we've already done a lot, I know, but, um, go ahead with it. And that would be Shirley, you're first.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I, I believe that affordable housing, um, is the desire of everybody in Durango. It's everybody I talk to is concerned about affordable housing. But for the purposes of, of the short time that I have, I really do want to address the unhoused because that's what I felt like has come up over and over again. Um, I believe that the city has done incredible work with affordable housing, uh, at the eighty percent and above. We know that the school district also passed a bond, uh, and that there's overwhelming support for that. But regarding the issue of the unhoused, um, I think that there are programs available. I know that there's groups, uh, in the community, the neighbors in need organization, um, and Mana, uh, that are really trying to address this issue. So I would like for the council to really take a deep dive in trying to figure out how we work with our community partners to address the issue of the chronically unhoused. It's really complicated, certainly not something that we can get into just in the two minutes that we have available. But there are programs all over the country, um, that are trying to address this issue. So, uh, as we continue to have a broader conversation, uh, I, I know there's been a plan for a strategic plan for housing. Um, but when we talk about our most vulnerable residents that have severe mental health issues, that have addiction issues, there are new developments and to how we try to tackle that issue. Um, it's a small population of people that would be addressing, we're still waiting for the feedback on how many chronically unhoused. Um, I, at one time, I, I remember reading it was only fifty-five people, perhaps it's more now. Um, but we also have to address it at the continuum. So I support affordable housing, different models that we can use really at every level. But given the difficulty and the complication and the sort of, um, what I think is gonna require a very large community effort to address the issue of the in-house population, uh, is where I would like to see the city make a really big effort and a really big push to lead.
Excellent. Kip?
Yeah, I would say that the city did, I, I think, a pretty good job, uh, last year. I had, I think, four hundred units of affordable housing at different levels, uh, within the AMI range, uh, were, um, agreed to and, and are moving forward. The, um, the mobile home park issue that you're talking to here, you know, I'm, I'm board chair for Local First. Um, we were integral in, uh, using our impact fund, which is, uh, a lot of businesses contributing uh, a certain percentage of their revenues into a fund to help, uh, major projects. And, uh, and that was a funding source for the West Side Mobile Home Park to, to, uh, purchase their own park, uh, along with others. Uh, the city has taken that and, and, you know, and exceeded even that goal, uh, in, in regards to the work with West Side. So there's a lot to be said for the partnerships here. There's a lot to be said for, for how much money is going into in time and, and concentration is going into affordable housing with the, uh, the prosperity office and some other things. I just don't want affordable housing to turn into a black hole that sucks all money down. I, I do at times think five hundred thousand for affordable housing, um, can make a difference, but it can make an incredible difference for childcare. And so there are times where I just want to make sure that we're balanced out affordable housing, childcare and transportation as well. Um, I do believe we've got some other opportunities too. The partnership with the tribe out of Three Springs and the Village Two, uh, plan for building affordable units out there. You've got almost twelve hundred units that can go out there. I don't, I know that there was some delays in, in some of the community park and the, and the stuff going on, uh, that were road issues. Would like to dive into that, uh, more. Would like to talk about how short-term rentals impact our housing. There's a whole lot of issues, as Shirley was talking about. It's very complex, but, um, but I think we've been doing good work and I just want to make sure it doesn't eat all of the budget up.
Yep, that's a concern. Uh, Olivier, you're next.
Yeah, good comments. I, uh, I like it. I'm gonna first respond to the mobile home park because I, I remember when that, uh, where you live, the, uh, the home, home park came up and I was very caught up in the details and the finances and the errors and so on. And then later someone in your area came back to me and said, it's easy to get up, get caught up in the, in the details, but you have to look at the big picture. So even, you know, there's details that should be changed, that should be done better or should be processed better. The end result is, uh, you have those units under your umbrella. You have as residents in that mobile home park control over your costs for the long term. So that aspect is definitely a success story. And, um, I learned from that. You never too old to learn. So I, I thought that was very refreshing to have that feedback. So I encourage all of those things to happen because it control, it gives you control over your housing. But I also think the city needs to play a role. And I think this, for example, the fair share ordinance needs improvements. We, uh, increase the cost for developers by ten percent, either because they have to build deep restricted units or whatever it is, or they pay a fee. And then if you add on the additional requirements that, uh, the city imposes on infrastructure improvements, it can increase the cost by twenty percent. So some people say, are we part of the solution or a part of the problem as a city with our rules? I think the, we need to work better with developers. Um, we need to have invil. We need to have, encourage, uh, organizations to do better, especially for the extremely low affordable housing, low-income people because that, that is a market we, the mark, that is an area where the, the market itself will not address properly. Um, I'm running out of time on all these things. I can talk too much. So I think we could do better. Uh, it's definitely clear.
Alright, next is Jessica.
Okay, yes. As I stated before, it is a passion of mine, affordable housing. I pushed, um, along with the counselors, some other counselors on council with me to get it on our strategic plan. I pushed for a housing division, which we have. Um, to Kip's comment, I think it's, that's super great. And I think that our new prosperity division that will house childcare, business development, housing, we'll be able to look at the whole collective of that and how we fund it and making sure that it's great because I totally agree. I think providing housing opportunities is a foundation for our stability as a community. Um, we made it, Durango residents made it clear in the community survey that housing and affordability are their top priorities. And in response, I feel like the city and city council has approved housing projects that have included four hundred and eight units specifically for local workforce. The residents at Durango, which are about two hundred and thirty units, are specifically for the thirty to sixty percent AMI. So that, that housing project is not for the eighty percent and above AMI. I too am like, super important to look at that continuum. How are we approaching every demographic in Durango to make sure that they have housing opportunities, um, available? We got, um, a developer, like creativity of our staff and our, um, and our council, I think. We got the residents at Durango to go forward by risking and putting on the line a million dollars of ARPA funding to secure that so we could find a partner to take it over and get that grant from Senator Bennett and Senator Hickenlooper. Um, the Animus City Park Overlook Project was supposed to be like five multimillion dollar homes. We got the developer with our help, um, to make it into, I want to say, I want to say fourteen um, townhomes and four of them are deed restricted. Um, we have a lot more deed restricted houses coming up with the, um, Twin Buttes area. And most importantly, we changed our fair share ordinance, which was huge and something that we really wanted to do. Um, fair share ordinance wasn't getting houses on the ground built and we made that change, so that's happening.
Good job. Uh, Chris Elias?
Yes, uh, you know, I'm, uh, I'm with Jessica on pushing affordable housing, you know? Um, I don't know if we need to start looking into cutting some, some, uh, potential red tape uh, to build maybe houses a little faster if we need to hire more inspectors to get things moving along a, a little bit better. Um, if we need to expedite permits to start building houses so people can afford to live here, um, maybe we need to look at, at maybe building a little bit more dense housing in, uh, available areas. You know, just thanks to, to bring down costs of, of, uh, building affordable homes, you know? Maybe it's not their forever home, but people used to have like their starter homes. And, you know, people can at least build equity to hopefully, you know, move up. Um, you know, and I see a lot of development in Three Springs and with that, uh, there will be more businesses, uh, in that area. And we need to also have, uh, housing for, for uh, those people. Uh, but we also need to make sure that we have a, uh, a good, um, minimum wage to make sure people can afford to live in this town. You know, like, nobody can afford the house if you're not paying them well. Um, they're not, you know, I'm afford, I'm all for taking care of people in this town that live here. Um, that's, that's my take on it.
Excellent. So I put in the chat about area median income and if you just Google the words area median income, uh, you'll find the HUD, which is Housing and Urban Development, has a chart and you can go through that to find out, um, you know, the different levels. It's pretty high here because we have kind of a rich county, so, um, not everybody's rich, but I'm, I'm making the point that our AMI is a hundred and four thousand dollars in La Plata County, which most of us are like, what? That's a lot, but heck. So the next question, our, our unhoused population, I'm gonna make this kind of a quickie. So I don't want everybody to go into it because you all have a, um, a group, um, you're meeting with Nina, Neighbors in Need Alliance at Christ of King Church on Thursday from two to four. And you'll have an opportunity to work with them and find out, uh, all the questions they have. So, um, the groups willing to work with this, okay, there are groups willing to work with the city and Nina is one of them. Are you willing to finally designate a place for homeless people to camp and/or create a managed camp? And warming centers in winter, which right now the warming center is only if it goes down below fifteen degrees. And there's only one of them and it's got issues. So, um, you know, we will talk about this on Thursday, so just keep your answers short and we'll move on to the next question after this. And the first person will be Kip Coso.
Um, keep the answer short on unhoused population. Um, I'm in favor of a warming center for sure. Uh, a managed camp, I, I would not say yes or no. I just can't. I, I, I need a lot more information before committing one way or the other on those. Um, we had all kinds of issues with Purple Cliffs. Uh, we have had, uh, issues with what I consider a part of the population that is, is professionalized. Um, and, uh, also at the same time, we've got a lot of our own local folks that are part of that population. So I, I'd need more discussion on that. And I will unfortunately not be able to attend that session. We had a, uh, uh, travel already planned, so I, I am happy to have that conversation separately.
Alrighty. And the next one would be, um, Olivier.
Yeah, I think, uh, this is a very good question. I, I will also keep it short because of that, uh, next meeting, but I think, um, we need to do more on prevention. We need to do more on health and addiction, uh, support. We need to do more, definitely more on giving, uh, homeless people a safe, uh, shelter, uh, campsite, warming shelter, whatever it is. We have done quite a bit of work on working on the transitional housing and trying to help uh, su- support system, whether it's with Mana. We have su- super, uh, we have really great organizations that are willing and are doing a lot of work on this subject. Uh, the city, not in my opinion, not the, the, the one that's the most active. And I have, this is where your track record comes in. I'm an active counselor. I have brought this topic up every year and to date, I, uh, I look forward to the new council to have the opportunity to bring it forward and actually have a discussion about it. Because I think we're not doing a very humane, um, we are not very humane to the most, um, fragile uh, group of people in our community.
Okay, me?
Jessica.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, this is a very complex project or problem, um, in our community and nationwide. Um, trying to take care of our unhoused friends and neighbors, um, and protect, uh, each other as well as, you know, make sure that we have, um, that we're stepping in, in, in the right direction. Um, we have a coordinating, or we had a coordinating council on homelessness where we had members of Mana, the city, the county, lots of different members in there. They came to the conclusion after surveying, after Purple Cliffs closed, I believe our last update was May of twenty-four. Um, but after, uh, Purple Cliffs closed is that the majority of, um, of people that were in Purple Cliffs that are still in Durango wouldn't use a managed camp. And so they recommended that we really focus on that, like transitional housing and how do we get people into homes as quickly as possible, um, that are experiencing homelessness that, you know, are active members of our community that have jobs, that, you know, all these, there's so many different options and, and ways to go. And there's not one answer for every person that's experiencing homelessness. And that's where it, the tricky part comes in. And so I think a, like a multi-pronged approach in trying to like solve, um, this problem for our community in the best way possible, whether that's, um, through our Friday specialty court that Judge Margerson's putting in, funding, um, programs at Mana, which we are big funders and sponsors of, getting that transitional housing of thirty to sixty AMI or less. Um, you look at services that, you know, this population needs. Grand Junction Hospital is closing its doors, which means anyone that's needing mental health, help that can't get it at access is gonna have to go to the front range now. That is detrimental. It's just another block in our like way to, in our, in our paths forward. And so really getting creative and trying to figure it out. And yes, go back and look at those meetings, see what counselors brought up limitations when it came to homelessness and who we support because that, that's super important. Thank you.
Um, let's see, after Jessica would be, uh, Chris and then Shirley.
Okay, this is, uh, just like everybody said, it's a, uh, difficult, uh, topic to, uh, discuss because it's, it's a very hard solution. Um, I will say from my experiences from living in Los Angeles, the city would try to build housing for homeless and a lot of people, not a lot, I'm not gonna say everyone, but a lot of homeless did not want to move into this, into housing because it came with stipulations. You know, they're, they're not allowed to do drugs in these, in these houses. So what do you do with the, uh, that population? Do we allow them to just stay on the streets and do the drugs? It doesn't create a safe place for us. It doesn't create a, a safe place for our kids. If you've been around the Knights Street Bridge, I've had frie- friends that are women that refuse to go to that area. Um, and it's, you know, not safe. So what do we do about that? I do believe that we should look into more helping, uh, with mental hea- health crisis to hopefully move them into like, into some housing and drug addictions. But as far as what we do with people that don't want help, that haven't kind of reached the bottom, that's a, uh, hard topic. Do we incarcerate them? I'm not sure about that answer. But I know you, you can't force them into housing, uh, if, if they don't want it. You know, that takes away their civil rights, but also, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't create a safe place for all of us. So that's my two cents and, yep.
All right, thank you. And, uh, finally on this question, Shirley.
Okay, thank you. So I, I, my support for the continuum is because we know that we need to support people at every level. Um, in my experience, um, and there was a very large shelter in my district in San Antonio, thirteen acres that provided a number of support services. It was a really good model for people that, um, were likely to take advantage of the services, uh, and, you know, were able to address their addictions. Um, or people that were as a temporary, you know, maybe they had a, a, a uh, issue of getting unemployed and so would stay for a short amount of time. Um, but generally, in, talking to experts, they don't support the shelter model. We should just invest in housing-first model. And it, it, the funding is complicated. Um, but we know that if we can get people to, but we can get members of our community to support um, all of the, the health services, working with the, the access or other organizations that do mental health services. Uh, we can tackle the issue like little by little, really one individual at a time. And so we know that one model doesn't work for everyone. Uh, but just for the benefit of every member of our community, um, I think trying to take a more individualized approach works best for this particular issue. So I've talked to folks about a warming center. I'm not opposed to it. Um, I would support that if that's what there was a, you know, general desire for. But I, we, I believe that we need to just address a housing-first model. And we know that we can do it at a small kit scale if we have a, enough of the support services around that issue. So, and it is very complicated, but I think we can try to break it down, um, little by little a- and, and get support of our community partners.
Great, thank you. And again, the people on Thursday from two to four, there will be at, uh, Christ of King Church, talking about this with neighbors in need. If, uh, and I don't know if they're gonna record that or how they're gonna do it, but I think it's just in person. So if you can go that, they'll have a deeper discussion. So our next question is about minimum wage increase in the city of Durango. Since twenty nineteen, all Colorado municipalities have had the power legally to raise the minimum wage by up to fifteen percent per year in their town or city. So that's laws on the books, uh, Denver and Boulder County have both done it and Denver and Boulder City have done it. Boulder more recently, so it's taken a while. Uh, this, a group is now asking Durango to do so for the city. This would raise the minimum wage in the city to seventeen oh three. Many businesses pay well above that because they know that helps retain employees. And if you all, I'll go off script here, um, oh God, what was it called? The, the, um, Thrive Program. It kinda fell apart with the pandemic, but the Thrive Program, um, is now under Local First and they got like forty or fifty businesses to really, uh, consider a living wage and they have stickers still on the windows. So, um, I know that a lot of businesses here are already, um, retaining their employees by paying more. City council's scheduling a study session for our group in May to Tuskegee. Do you support raising the minimum wage in Durango? And this time we'll start with, uh, Olivier.
Yeah, thank you Karen. I, this is, I guess, a little bit what I stand for. Yeah, I have residents, uh, bring topics to me that, um, as a counselor, in my, I represent the people. So if you bring a topic to me, no matter what it is, and I feel it's related to our community and important, then I will bring it up as your business item. And, uh, it can be a pet, it can be composting and as, uh, several people voiced, uh, the minimum wage. And I think that is, uh, that's what you're supposed to do as a council. And then we'll take a look at how the, uh, events evolve. Unfortunately, it's in May, uh, but that could also be a positive thing because now you can see how people stand. Uh, prior to that, uh, meeting, might even influence your decision. So, thank you for bringing that up.
Alrighty, and, uh, this is, uh, Jessica's next on this.
Yeah, so, um, this was under new business and, um, the, uh, you know, the topic that I specifically brought up as a counselor to get more information. I think there's certain things that come to council that I'm not an expert on. There's actually many things that come to council that I'm not an expert on. And I think it's important that we do gather all the information, um, and hear from citizens and business owners and advocates and just kind of weigh out, see success stories from like cities, um, and weigh out all, all the pros and cons. What you don't want is like to rush to a resolution and say, yes, let's increase the minimum wage and then have unintended consequences. And so I think that is really important when we're coming as a counselor and I'm bringing new items up for new business is you wanna have, be able to have time, to have a dialogue, to have research done and to really make an impact. We knew this would be something, or I knew it would be something that wouldn't go into effect tomorrow. Like even if council supports it, it's probably gonna be, you know, January twenty twenty-six that we, you know, increase the minimum wage if we decide to go that route. And so I figured that if we went through and like just, you know, hurried ahead without the proper information, the new council would be getting on board and they'd have to make a decision right away with maybe not having all the background. So this is one of those things, like I've been on council in a while, a while now. I know how the process works. And so it's great to, to be able to look ahead and say, okay, let's wait till a new council gets on. Let's have a study session with everybody and then let's really make a thoughtful, informed decision. Weighing Chamber of Commerce, the Economic La Plata Development Alliance, small business owners in our area. I do believe that, you know, a lot of small businesses in Durango already, already pay more than minimum wage. Um, just the need to, to in or, in order to retain great employees. And so I think there's a natural way that we do increase the minimum wage. And so, you know, just kind of weighing all that information out and I think, um, it'll be a great discussion.
Excellent. Uh, Chris, you're next and then Shirley. No, wait a minute, wait a minute, let me, okay, Chris, Shirley and Kip.
Yes, of course. Uh, with the, uh, cost of living going up, cost of food going up, um, me personally, I do believe that the minimum wage does need to be raised. The, with out-of-town buyers of second homes in this, in this town and then this, this county, people need a fighting chance to be able to live here. You know, I, I know that, um, Purgatory's been like, you know, not that we're in charge of them or have any jurisdiction over them, but they've had a hard time finding lifties and I know they've shut down some, some lifts throughout the winter. So, a- and rearranged some things, but, um, I'm just saying, we need to attract employees to be able to live here. You know, that's what makes our town great. It may not be a favorable, favorable answer because maybe small businesses are maybe hanging on by a thread. And, um, I, I will definitely look into it. It's not a definitive answer. But I am, you know, I, I was the worker in this town. You know, I was living paycheck to paycheck. And there's a recent study that came out that sixty percent of Americans work paycheck to paycheck. So we need to, we need to do something about this. Thank you.
Shirley?
In twenty sixteen, um, I led the fight for fifteen, which sounds almost quaint, yeah. Um, but I'm a- Yeah, um, but I'm a firm believer in increasing wages. Uh, we know that it's the most challenging issue. In fact, I think that's why affordability is sort of at the top of everybody's mind. But I believe we need to start with ourselves. So that means the city needs to pay seventeen dollars an hour, which they don't in many, uh, different places. I know sometimes it's part-time work, um, but, or seasonal work, but we need to start there. So before we force it on any other businesses, let's start with ourselves, with other government entities like the county, uh, like La Plata Electric, like, uh, perhaps, um, the hospitals or the larger entities that, uh, get taxpayers' dollars. Uh, let's start there and then we can work with, um, our neighbors to see if that's something that, that they can support. I have a small business. All of my employees make seventeen dollars an hour. I would pay them more if I could. Um, I believe that they are hardworking and that they deserve as much as we can support as a small business. But the reality is we are struggling as small business owners and all of the additional requirements, um, that we have to go through is, it's just too much. So let's start internally, let's start at the city. Let's talk to our friends at the county. Let's talk to the other taxing entities at the fort. Uh, do they pay fifteen dollars an hour? Um, their state agency, uh, or, or other state agencies? Let's start there first. Um, and then we can move on to the small businesses if we feel like, uh, we, it's necessary.
All righty, thank you. Kip.
Yeah, I'd encourage everybody to look at region nine, just put out a report on living wage. And, and I think it's a great, um, way to, to gut check where we are right now and our living wage for our county and, and neighboring entities. The, the rising of the minimum wage comes with a lot of difficulties associated with it. So Denver in twenty twenty one raised their minimum wage up to eighteen eighty one. Uh, that's higher than what we'd be talking about here, obviously. Um, but they've got a twenty-two percent decline in the number of Denver residents, restaurants. Uh, those are closures and, uh, for the most part, it was related to labor costs. So there are very real effects from an increase in the minimum wage. Um, I have issues with the fact that, uh, it should be a national minimum wage that's being raised and not just in our community. Uh, I think it makes us a bit, bit of an island as well. Um, the businesses have had increases in their rent, it has had increases in their operating costs. Um, so there is challenges anybody else and that I, I at times feel like raising a minimum wage is more of a hammer approach when you need a scalpel. I don't think lifties are, uh, the same as manual laborers, as the same as, uh, river raft guides, uh, in many ways. And so I think the individual ecosystems, the businesses need to figure out what works and, and what can work within their own ecosystem. Um, I also believe that small independently owned local businesses treat their employees better and, uh, raise wages better. Um, but they're doing everything they can right now. Uh, I know my own experience with nonprofits has shown, uh, we've pushed wages up and eventually had to cut positions, uh, because we could not keep the funding, uh, to keep up the living wage. And so very complex issue, requires a lot more conversation, um, and, uh, has a lot of, uh, of tough decisions to be made around it.
Thank you, thank you all. And, um, thanks for bringing up the national, uh, minimum wage. It's just a travesty of seven twenty-five or whatever it is. Anyway, um, last question, um, would be concerns about our residents and neighbors. Uh, what additional effort should Durango, the city of Durango, make to protect our immigrant and LGBTQ plus communities? And, uh, any other marginalized community? What should Durango do to better acknowledge the concerns of our neighboring Native American tribes? And, um, let's see, number one will be Jessica and then Mark. I know then what? Oh, I'm sorry, Jessica, Chris, Shirley, Kip and Olivier, you'll be last. Thanks.
Um, yeah, I think that, you know, as a city counselor and a member of our, of our community, making sure everyone feels welcome and safe and heard and proud to be a Durango resident is, you know, of the utmost importance. Um, you know, we have, we have recreated the, um, the Community Relations Commission, um, and have it, you know, it, it's restarting again to try to build those bridges and find connections within our community to make sure people feel, you know, that, that, that we're accessible, that we come to them, that we, you know, they have a voice. Um, I was talking with, uh, Karen, the superintendent of the nine R school district, and they're having great turnout with their, um, I think it's quarterly meeting that they do. Um, you know, really encouraging, you know, Spanish speakers, um, and any marginalized community to come in and voice their, voice their concerns and how they can, you know, do better. And I brought, Karen and I were talking about the possibility of like a community, uh, event like this. So that way there's not having to be like, oh, come to the city one, go to the nine R one, go to the county one. Um, that gets to be, you know, laborious and exhausting. And so coming up with a community meeting where we can make sure that, cause she said that a lot of the concerns are specifically county related or city related. And so if we could have one, um, you know, maybe, maybe intergovernmental meeting where we work together and really hear, you know, um, the needs and concerns of some community members that, you know, feel like they, they don't have access. Um, the city has done great things now with having translation services available at every outreach meeting, every city council meeting. You know, continuing to make those steps in the right direction to feel like, make sure every community member in Durango feels like they're a part of Durango is super important to me.
All righty, thank you. And then, um, I'm sorry, I'm losing track here. Chris Elias.
Right, um, what do I think we should, what kind of efforts do I think we should make? Uh, we definitely need to make sure that, um, immigrants that are, uh, that are in this area, we need to make sure that they try to feel protected as much as we can. Uh, there's not much we can do. I guess if the federal government comes in, we can say we're a sanctuary city and that would, that would be amazing. Uh, immigrants make up a large portion of this, this country's workforce. Uh, I don't want to continue to refer to how I like lived in California, but they're very much a big part of this economy. So we need to do what we can to protect immigrants that live here. Cause the, the work that they do in the Central Valley, I, I don't want to be like, nobody wants to do it. But for the wages that they make, you know, I don't think any of us would do it. Uh, especially whenever it hits midsummer, like at a hundred degrees. So we need to protect our, yeah, the immigrants that live here. In all, in all factuality, like we all are pretty much all immigrants to America. You know, unless you're, unless you're full-blooded native, you have like nowhere to complain if you ask me about immigrants. Also about the LGBTQ plus, uh, uh, community, um, you know, I love the fact that we live in a very, uh, very open community and I want that to continue, you know, and we do need to protect their rights. I don't know much about if there is that much friction with the Native American tribes. I heard that there was maybe a misunderstanding, but of course we need to work with them. There are neighbors that were here way before us, you know, and, you know, being a part Cherokee, uh, you know, my, my, uh, mother's side of the family was, was moved to Oklahoma, you know, so they've been wronged. They've done so, anyways, we need to listen to.
Thank you. And Shirley.
My mother is a Mexican immigrant. I'm first generation in this country. Yo tambien hablo español, nos podemos comunicar en la lengua de su corazón. And that's a, a phrase that they use here in Durango that people can speak in the language of their heart. And I thought that was really beautiful. Um, I know as a, um, I feel that Durango has been really progressive, uh, in its, in its, um, in it, um, sort of helping its neighbors that are, that come from other parts of the country, or rather of the world. Um, I served for a time as co-executive director at Companeros where we were helping, uh, people that were newly arrived in this country from all over Latin America, but also in other parts of the world. Um, and, and my sense is that Durango is the most compassionate, most welcoming community that exists, that I've ever been a part of. And while, you know, we're not perfect, um, but I think that we're very welcoming. Uh, and I have, I have witnessed, um, as, uh, the co-executive director of Companeros, the most generous people, um, donating their time, uh, people that are Spanish speaking, um, coming forward, offering mental health services, offering, um, uh, counseling services, uh, providing housing, um, trying to make sure that people could speak in the language of their heart. And, you know, we have a long way to go, just like every other community and caring for immigrants. Uh, but I think Durango really could be leading in our compassion for our neighbors. And so, um, I, I am, um, I believe that we can continue to grow that, seeing the land acknowledgements, um, that, that the city does and organizations do. Um, I haven't seen that everywhere. So I'm looking forward to continuing, uh, to serve our immigrant population. Um, I know I heard Olivier say he spoke Spanish, maybe others do too. Um, but I'm looking forward to communicating with people's language of the heart.
Thank you. All right, next is, uh, Kip and then we'll finish that question with Olivier.
Yeah, I, I firmly believe the topic of immigration has been dealt with incorrectly for years now. Um, I, I, I don't understand why the HB visa programs, I don't understand why DACA, uh, kids are being, uh, thrown back into countries that they never experienced any, had any experience with. Um, so I would like law enforcement, uh, I would never ask law enforcement not to, um, be enforcing the laws, uh, that they were hired to enforce. I would ask them not to do anything extra, uh, if they don't have to. And so, um, I think it's important that we try and weather the storm right now and we work on viable solutions, um, that are going to include, uh, immigrants that are new, uh, members of our country. Um, as all of our history, unless we're Native American, we had an immigrant that's somewhere in, in, in our history. And so we gotta keep, keep understanding that and, and keep moving forward with it. Um, I think we pivot off of organizations like Los Campaneros and, and the, uh, LGBTQ organizations and nonprofits that support those populations and, and take our direction from them. You know, what's the best ways that we can support, uh, populations that are scared, uh, at this point? And, and, um, I think that's important as well. In regards to the tribal issues, uh, I worked for nine years with the Southern Indian tribe, um, came to understand the sovereignty issues that I think city councils and, and county commissioners at times get very wrong. Um, they need to understand how important sovereignty is to the tribe, uh, especially when you're talking about land. And then, um, I also think it gave me a good perspective on historical trauma and the issues that they've wrestled with over the years. So, um, I think I can speak to that fairly well, as well as anybody who's not a tribal member can.
Thank you, Kip. And Olivier.
Uh, thank you. Always an interesting, uh, topic that you bring up here because it's so easy for people. Anybody can say whatever people want to hear, especially in politics. But, um, it's actions that count. I, um, and I'll just speak for myself. I, I, I respect and treat everybody equally. Um, and that applies to, uh, white male, to Latinos, minorities, Native Americans, every category or group that you can come up with unless it's violent. I, um, uh, the Community Relation Commission was mentioned. I supported the, that group, even though at the time our city council made it very hard for them to the point that it was as good as dissolved or unfunctional. Uh, they were and are, uh, great people that served volunteering their time. They worked on many items that we implemented, uh, including the land acknowledgement that we current, well, the, the current one is a little bit different than they worked on, but they were definitely spending a lot of time on it. And if you look at the city and the city council, uh, look at, look at the organization, look at the makeup. And then, um, you can draw your own conclusions. I, uh, I do appreciate you bringing this topic up though.
All righty, well, thank you so much. Those are a lot of great answers to questions. And, um, what I'm putting in the, in the chat right now is stuff I hope people will, um, copy and paste into your computer since you're sitting there. And we'll give you a few minutes. The, um, the next coming events are, um, let's see, we got, um, I would like everyone to read the article I linked, which is our representative Jeff Hurd and how he's, um, dealing with issues. Uh, and then tomorrow morning, there's an event at the Durango library. Uh, and then tomorrow night, there's an event for the city council at city hall chambers. And that's a hybrid as far as I'm her hearing, right? It's hybrid. Uh, you can, um, go to whatever, I don't know what link, city council, and get the, uh, link to do, uh, Zoom in because city hall is not that big, so. And then on, uh, March fifth, there's a town hall with our Senator Hickenlooper and our Attorney General Phil Weiser. Also March sixth, there's the homelessness thing. Uh, March eighth, uh, Bread Cafe, the Palestinian Coalition wants to have a potluck. And then we've got some other stuff. Let's see if I missed anything in between there. And at the end, I, I've got, uh, take action and do something. You can donate to the Dems, you can learn about project twenty twenty-five if you haven't read it already. Oh, there you go. And then, uh, you can get on our mailing list or also join Indivisible Durango. And, um, that's a, a general group nationwide, there's over six thousand groups and we're doing a lot of work to try and get people to have a voice in what's going on nationally. So that's my plug and I want to thank you all for coming. And I'd like to give a virtual round of applause to all, or you can unmute and really clap if you want for all five of our candidates who are, are gonna be wonderful. Uh, one last person, Antonio. Antonia Clark is, uh, let's see, we're almost at time, but I'll go back up to her question. I'm sorry, Antonia, she wanted to ask, it's way up there. Uh, over a hundred and fifty Main Avenue businesses and over five hundred citizens signed a petition opposing next step. What are your ideas for modifying the next step? Let me put it in the chat. Okay, let me get it here. Uh, what are your ideas for modifying it? And would you be willing to meet with the business community to, to discuss design plans? And, um, I'll leave this up to you guys to just pop in here. Um, you've kind of discussed it a little bit. So does anyone have a?
Yeah, I'll, I'll step in. I think modifications are, are going to need to be included in this. I think, um, the businesses downtown have legitimate concerns, um, both on the safety side as well as on, um, the impact to, uh, local business side. Uh, so these conversations need to keep going and, and I appreciate the passion with which, uh, they've been discussed as well. I do feel like we need more focus groups on residents and how residents want to see Main Street as well. Um, want to hear from businesses, but also want to hear from residents.
Thank you.
I, I could jump in real quick too. Um, a lot of you know, um, I, I'm the one that, uh, did the resolution to pause next steps. I feel like we do need to find that middle ground and that common ground, um, figuring out what's best for our downtown, businesses downtown. Um, we are going to have to tear up Main Street to do utilities. There is a study about that, actually. Um, we've had numerous businesses that have had water main, water breaks and they have to shut down the entire block of Maine when that happens. Um, instead of being able to just turn it off at the business location like most modern day infrastructure you can. And so that was like the initial in twenty thirteen, multimodal recommended this project come forward. I've been myself to at least ten community meetings about it. I do want to continue the talk. Um, I think it's fiscally irresponsible to do it right now while we're trying to get the new police department, city hall. I think we need to see what happens with that, with selling the two properties, um, that are currently police department city hall, which will also open up parking because, um, our police department does take up a bunch of parking and, and, um, city hall on, on that block. Um, I want to make sure that businesses have all the accurate information because I do go and talk to businesses. I went to probably thirty of those one hundred and fifty, um, businesses that signed it and talked to them. And many of them didn't know we were talking about doing the infrastructure anyways and they support that. And so it's just making sure, and I have a, I have a letter from Bike Durango with two hundred supporters that support more, you know, sidewalks and better, um, uh, uh, mobility for bikers and walk, you know, safety and that sort of thing. So it is, I think it's looking at both sides and finding that middle ground. You know, I have businesses like Carvers, Cream Bean Berry, Blue, uh, there's a bunch of them that want next steps. And then there's obviously a bunch that are very vocal that don't. And I think we need to listen to everyone and try to find what's best for our community.
I'll throw in my like two little cents about it. I'm all, I'll throw in my like two little cents about it. Um, I think there's great pros for it. Um, as far as maybe if we do take like a little bit of parking spaces away, maybe a lot of locals need to start riding their bike a little more and walking into town. And, you know, parking really isn't an issue for the locals, you know? If climate change is real, we need to be walking. I mean, it is real. Sorry, I don't mean to put that. Uh, climate change is real and maybe we should be walking more to downtown. But I also do understand the fact that there's an elderly generation that likes to park near, uh, near the restaurants and the stores. Also, there's a lot of tourists that come here that are acclimated to our elevation, you know? And I don't wanna say, but maybe a lot of them aren't as fit as we are. So I understand the other side. As far as biking go, I haven't discussed anything with Bike Durango. But, you know, the con for, for, uh, next steps is that it would narrow lanes. It would, um, you know, narrow the median. It would cut off some of that little excess part for parking, uh, that will still be there. So I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I, like I said, I'm on the fence. But, uh, anyways, thank you.
Shirley, did you wanna say anything or?
Well, yeah, as the owner of a bike shop, I own Pedal the Peaks Bike Shop and, and really champion walkability, alternative transportation. Um, and it's again, a complicated issue, but when it comes to walkability and safety for all road users, vulnerable road users, we cannot prioritize both. I wish I could say that, you know, we can do both. We can serve the people that wanna drive and we can serve the people that wanna walk and ride their bikes. Unfortunately, you almost always have to choose. Do we choose for automobile dominance? Do we choose for walkability and safety for all road users? And that's just the reality. Um, I supported the, um, the next steps plan as presented. Uh, but I feel like we can go further to address, um, the, um, the walkability and safety of this community. So, uh, I think that, you know, regarding the infrastructure, again, like we have to address infrastructure. Uh, and we know that having a business, a street shut down is extremely damaging to the existing community, the existing businesses. So how we expedite that, perhaps we do it a little bit at a time. Um, but I have lots of thoughts about how, uh, we can address parking. Uh, we know that alternative transportation and having greater walkability and, uh, greater cycling, um, reduces the need for more parking. Uh, so we, um, it, it's, I, I know it's been an issue that's been ongoing. Jessica mentioned twenty thirteen. Uh, we also know that, um, that continuing to delay a project just means it's not gonna happen. I mean, that's just the reality of life and, um, even in your own home, you continue to delay a project is not gonna happen. So, um, I think that, you know, it's, um, infrastructure is the fundamental sort of basic thing that we do at the council. Um, and so needs like drainage and sewer and stormwater have to be addressed, um, as well. So, um, I, you know, I, I, I have, I could go on, but I'll leave it, uh, at that.
Alright, Olivier, did you wanna weigh in on this?
Yeah, I'll give my five cents. I, um, first of all, my position is that I'm not against vitalizing downtown and I fully support a vibe in downtown. But, um, I also think it's very important that our community is well-informed. And, um, I hear things being said that I just, I'll just give you some thought to think. First of all, um, bike safety. Uh, please remember that the traffic slowing that is being a part of this design is actually cyclists on the road slowing down cars. Then the, uh, what I hear often is people saying it needs infrastructure improvement and so on. And I have yet to see, I'm an engineer, I look at this stuff regularly. I, I have yet to see a, 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 a good justification. Anybody can send, if you have it, send it to me because I have not seen it. And I can tell you that if in my house, there's a leaking faucet, I will not replace all my water lines. I will fix the leaking faucet. And at a certain point, of course, there's too much. And then you have to make a decision. You know, if everything leaks everywhere, then you have another issue. I have not seen that. So to use that as a justification, maybe the, the community wants good information on that topic. And, and then probably the most important, uh, our community, the majority, I have, my feeling is that the large majority of our community and a large community, the part of the business do not support this current design. And the last comment I'll make is, uh, misinformation, as in this being stopped. Uh, this council, I was voting against it, approved in the budget for this year, one point zero two million to be spent on the design, different parts of the design of Durango next steps. So we are not, we haven't stopped anything. We are moving full force forward with that spending. And that might be another concern, uh, do we spend our taxpayers' dollars? Well, but this is information, just have a good information for our community. These forums help. Thank you so much, Karen. I think that was the last question. I wanna just thank you for organizing this and, uh, bringing the positions of the different candidates to our community and your group.
And we only went a few minutes over. So thank you all for being patient. And I know the Herald is on here, so I hope we see an article. Uh, again, this is recorded and it will be on YouTube. Just put in La Plata Dems and you'll see it. Uh, you might need to put La Plata Dems Club. But thank you so much, candidates, and we'll see you over the next few weeks, week or so.